And pull the agenda, there's, should be an agenda in the back bookshelves. And Jerry, if you would note that Karen and Bill are gone today and Lindell is representing County Board. At this meeting, our first order of business is election of officers. Our annual first meeting in July is when we elect officers. Just for information, I've been a chair for three years and so my term is expired. I can't be chair anymore even if can't be nominated. So, we'll have a new chair one way or another, so, according to our bylaws. Anyway, I'd open it up for nominations for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Karen. She's not here, but...
Do I have a second?
I have a second, Bill.
Do you have any other nominations?
I'll nominate Lori.
Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second, any further nominations? Nomination, entertain a motion for nominations to cease?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Jerry, do you have, I believe it require written ballots for voting?
Yeah. Was there a second on the, I didn't get the...
Yeah, we had, Lori, yeah, there was a second for Lori also.
Lindell.
Lindell, okay.
Oh, here's one.
Oh.
Some, they must be left over from...
I've voted a few times, the board.
I don't have, I don't have a pen, I'm sorry. Can I borrow one? I'll give it back.
Our nominations for chair are Karen and Lori, so...
Just write one right.
And Jerry, do you want to collect them, or PJ?
Thank you.
By a vote of three to two, Karen is our new chairperson.
And she had indicated that she would, excuse me, losing my voice. She had indicated she would accept it, so, if she was nominated. PJ, then do you want to run the elections for first vice chair and second vice chair?
Yeah.
Okay. Next position that's up for election is vice chairperson. Open up for nominations.
Can Sig be vice?
He can.
Okay. He can? Okay. I nominate Sig.
Second?
Second.
Do we have any other nominations?
Stealing my thunder.
Oh, that's right, you're running. Sorry. At this point.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations? Okay. So do we need a motion then for approve Sig as vice chair? Or by, vote by acclamation?
I move that Sig be vice chair.
By acclamation?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Sig, you want to run the next one since you're now vice running the meeting?
I'd now accept motions for nominations for second vice chair. I would nominate Lori. Have a motion second, any further nominations?
Who made the first motion?
Well, I did.
Sig did.
Sig, okay.
Hearing none, I guess I would make a motion that, accept a motion that Lori be by proclamation on second vice chair, so...
Can I second?
Yep. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Pass the election of officers, I believe so. Approval of the June 22nd meeting? Any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, I entertain a motion for approval of the June 22nd meeting minutes is published?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Approval of the agenda? When we approve the agenda, it includes a consent calendar, but approve the agenda first and then we'll go to the consent calendar approval after that. Is there any additions, changes to the agenda? Entertain a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Go to the consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by the planning commissioners, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commissioner or recommendations of the county board of commissioners will make the final decision. I would note also that our votes require approval of four, approval, quorum basically of the planning commission, not those present, so four is needed today, even though we have two missing, it's, still need four votes for approval. And first go to the staff as far as pulling any items?
Staff had like 11 and 12 pulled from consent, please.
This is very, planning commission, anyone wishing to pull any of the items? If not, PJ, if you had read items, four through, what?
Public poll.
Usually go, how do you read? I'm going to go to the public. Consent items, if you had read items four through 10 and 13, and then we'll go to the audience.
PJ, County Director of Planning Department. Consent calendar for planning commission consists of the following items. Item number four, conditional use permit review 0925 for Steve Holbart. To review a ranch hand residence in a general agriculture district, staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 0925 with five conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review 0514 for Donald Strobe. To review a single wide manufactured home as a single family residence in a suburban residential district, staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 0514 with eight conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1117 for Dwayne Brink, LLP Investments Limited Partnership. To review a well drilling business and accessory exterior equipment and material storage in a highway service district, staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1117 with 10 conditions. Item seven, planned unit development amendment review PU 0603 for Bank West Incorporated. To review a planned unit development amendment to allow 75 residential lots, one well lot and one retention lot with a minimum lot size of a half acre, staff recommends approval of the extension of PUD 0603 with 11 conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1030 for Janelle Gibson, David and Miriam Eisenbrow owners, to review the operation of a dog and cat kennel breeding facility in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1030 with eight conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit review 1311 for Sugar Daddy's Kerry Johnston, to review an RV site on the subject property to be utilized on a part-time basis, basically weekends, in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1311 with six conditions. Item 10, conditional use permit review 1416 for Justin and Cassandra Kistler, to allow a double wide manufacturer home to be used as a temporary residence while constructing a stick built residence in limited agriculture district. Staff recommends to revoke conditional use permit 1416 with the applicant's concurrence. Item 13, vacation of easement 1503 for Grace and William Shoal, to vacate three feet of an eight-foot wide utility and minor drainage easement to allow an addition to be built onto the existing garage. Staff recommends approval of the vacation of easement 1503 with six conditions.
Is there anyone from the audience that'd like to pull any of those items that were just read into the record, items four through 10 and 13? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar, items four through 10 and 13.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item 11.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor. Item 11 is subdivision regulation variance SV 1517 to waive plating requirements in order to create lots one and two of 10 city load MS 2504. And staff originally had recommended approval of this with conditions, but upon further review of the applicant's request, additional information was discovered that may affect this request, so staff is recommending to continue subdivision regulation variance 1517 to the July 27, 2015 planning commission meeting.
That was the recommendation in the staff report, so is there something changing for the reason it was pulled, or just...
No, because actually on the agenda, there was recommending approval, because that's what had, what went out and was advertised.
Okay.
So we had to pull it to continue it.
Okay. Any questions for Brittany? Staff's recommendation is to continue subdivision variance request 15-17 to July 27, planning commission meeting, entertain a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item 12.
Item 12 is rezone 1509 and comprehensive plan amendment 1509, to rezone 7.615 acres from highway service district to low density residential district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from highway service district to low density residential district. Again, staff is recommending to continue this to the July 27, 2015 planning commission meeting. During further review of this request, it was found that this rezone to highway service in 1996 was actually overturned in court, so it was back to general agriculture district, so we will have to re-advertise this correctly and work with the applicant to move forward on this rezone.
If no further questions for Brittany, I'd entertain a motion to, for, continues to July 27?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
I'll take this to item...
14.
14.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item 14 is conditional use permit 1513 to allow a ranch hands residence in a general agriculture district. The applicant is Richard and Dolores Lindstrom. The agent is Rod Lindstrom. The existing land use of this property is residential and agricultural. As it exists today, this property is zone general agriculture district. It is 60.71 acres. Currently, the lot contains some structures that are addressed as 12179 Reno Gulch Road. That consists of the existing primary residence, a single family residence built in 1940, a detached garage, two storage sheds, and a carport. Also, on the property is a equipment storage building, which is located up here. There is also three old barn structures throughout the property, and then one old outhouse building. Those structures have been in place for many, many years. On June 22nd, the applicant applied for this conditional use permit. At the time of application submittal, they are unsure what type of residence they will be using for the ranch hands residence in terms of whether it will be a mobile home or a cabin. The proposed location for the ranch hands residence is near the existing equipment building on this portion of the parcel up here. They have applied for an onsite wastewater treatment system permit to put a new septic system up here for the ranch hands residence. And also on July 8th, staff did perform a site visit, verified the structures on the property, and also did speak with the agent Rod Lindstrom. He made the following statements to staff. It still has not been decided what type of structure will be out there. He's in the process of hiring a ranch hand, hasn't hired one yet, but the ranch hand will be indirect, directly related to the operations of the ranch. And all the structures on the property were built in the early 90s or before. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process and no significant issues were raised at that time. There are five factors that the zoning ordinance lists for the planning commission to consider. Staff has looked at these factors. The use of the ranch hands residence is consistent with the use of the land and the surrounding development. Staff does not feel this would have any negative effect on the normal development of the surrounding property or any sort of negative impact on property values in the surrounding area. All utilities and facilities that are necessary for the ranch hands residence are either already supplied on the property or will be supplied in terms of the septic system. So staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit 1513 with 10 conditions.
Any questions for Cassie? Jim?
Thank you. My question is, there's, one of the conditions is the ranch hand statement.
Mm-hmm.
Now, perhaps I was gone when we decided to have a ranch hand statement. I don't remember this. But anyway, can you tell me the, the conditions of that?
The ranch hand statement is essentially just a form that we have in the planning office that basically states that the ranch hand residents will be directly involved in the operations of the ranch. It's kind of a little bit of backup that we have so that that can't be used as like a rental property for somebody who's not helping with the ranch operations.
Okay, so if I rent this ranch hand residence to somebody, okay, but he mows some grass for me, this ranch is 60 acres, is that right?
Yeah, yep.
So it's not a big ranch?
No, it's not a huge ranch, but in order for it to be considered a ranch hands residence, they do have to be directly involved in the haying or the running of the cattle or something directly involved in the operations of the ranch.
But there's still going to be some kind of fiduciary relationship between the person who lives there, in other words, he doesn't, we're not requiring him to, you know, get the residence free and take it all out in labor, right?
Right. Essentially, they have to be being paid somehow as a ranch hand.
Okay. All right.
Is it the family member?
Well, with the family member, it could be, you know, like you get free room and board, but you have to help. Somehow, they have to be directly related to the operation of the ranch. They can't just live there and...
But we aren't requiring it to be a third party. I mean, it could be...
No, no, it doesn't have to be a third party. They have indicated that it will likely be a third party in this case, but it doesn't have to be. They just have to be involved in the operation.
Other questions for Cassie? Is the applicant here wishing to speak? If you're going to speak, if you could please come to state your name for the record and just, so we get it on the tapes, too.
Rod Lindstrom. The ranch is actually 250 acres. It's in sections.
So this section is just 60 acres where the property is?
Yeah, and there is a lot of bug tree issues up there, so that's, be a lot of the work will be removing bug trees.
Okay.
And, so, just was a question about how much...
Yeah, you know, I'm not concerned particularly, I mean, I know this can't, we don't want to be running out there checking to see if this guy's putting in enough hours and stuff, but I just wasn't familiar with his ranch hand statement and I just wanted to know what it was. It sounds like a sensible, you know, requirement to make, and the conditions you suggest would seem to be reasonable, so I think my concerns are satisfied.
Other questions for Mr. Lindstrom?
Thank you. Staff's recommendation is for approval of conditional use 15-13 with 10 conditions. Entertain a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Item 15. One second, we got the computer up and running. Not here, okay. Item 15 is rezone 1508 and comprehensive plan amendment 1508, to rezone 30.49 acres from general agriculture district to general commercial district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from limited agriculture district to general commercial district. Applicant and owner is Mitch Morris. The size of the property in question is 30.49 acres and is currently zoned general agriculture. The applicant does not appear to be in the room today. Staff is recommending that it be continued. The applicant is aware of this. Would you like me to go through the details before we go to a motion?
According to the planning commission, do you want to, more details on this, or...
Well, I'm just curious. This seems to come up often. I don't know how many times we've looked at this, but it always seems to be there's an absence of information or, you know, and I guess I'm a little frustrated by the continuant, continual appearance of this issue without some resolution. And I, I think your suggestion that we continue this makes sense, but is Mr. Morris just distracted by other things, or is there some reason for this? Or do you know?
I don't know if Mr. Morris is distracted from things. When he does talk with staff, and then staff talks with other agencies and gets answers, the applicant does say that the information's changed, and so we're constantly going back with different requests.
Right.
Getting different answers. Requests from the staff have been given to Mr. Morris to put stuff in writing. He's, hasn't said he's not willing to do that, he didn't also said he's not willing to do that. In addition, if, the way the condition is written today, there's no date for when it's going to, or the motion.
Okay.
So that he has some things he has to do first, we're requesting them in writing, then at the first possible planning commission meeting, we'll put them back on the agenda.
Okay, that's sensible. The continuance for a particular date seems pointless, or at least not...
If he can get everything in before we can get this on the agenda for the next one, we'll put them on the next one.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Lori.
I guess my concern is, is the landowner, do new issues keep coming up, or do, I don't want to have the landowner get frustrated because you keep coming up with new things.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, that's what I want to make sure.
Right. We don't come up with new things, the story of what's happening changes and requires us to get more information.
Then you start asking questions and...
Yes, that's what hap, that's what's happening.
Well, and before, there was the, the other parcels were, this is a different parcel, isn't it? I mean...
It is, completely different.
It's the parcel next to the Thai plant, too. My question...
Across the street, south.
I know there's a lot of concern on that before, and are there, you know, did the county put stronger requirements on this lot to kind of prevent issues that kind of came up before?
The Thai was recently reviewed within the last two years and it was approved, and there's been no further complaints to our office from the, about the Thai.
No, but I mean, as far as leaving a buffer around the property.
It's been talked about during meetings.
Well, there's Mr. Morris right here.
And a general commercial buffer does, there he is, does seem to be appropriate. Even some discussion from commissioners during the board meeting have stated that the, and I can't substantiate this, that the city prefers an industrial or agriculture buffer as well, not a residential zoning. That can be somewhere else.
Other questions for PJ? Mr. Morris, we're on your agenda item, did you wish to comment or have any comments?
I have a question.
If you could come up to the podium then, so...
Mitch Morris, I'm the owner and petitioner, and I guess I know there's some questions that are coming up on this, and I guess it's recommended to be extended? Is that correct?
Yeah, just like we talked about on Friday.
Yes. And so I guess when you do come up with your questions, I'd like to get them in writing if I can from you, so I can address them individually.
Okay, I believe that's part of the staff report, I mean...
The request is to answer from the applicant in writing, yes.
But if the planning commissioners have any questions, specific questions, I'd like to be able to address them prior to the next meeting.
Well, and this is being, it's, we're not setting, it's being continued, but until you submit additional information, it's hard to come up with questions until we know a more detailed plan.
Okay.
I think that's the issue that's, we're running into, is that we feel like there needs to be additional information on infrastructure, you know, overall plans, but we, it's, it's basically a rezone without detail, and we're looking for detail so we can come up with questions.
Okay.
And right now, it's an open-ended continuance, as soon as you get information to the planning staff, they'll get it on the agenda again.
Okay.
That's the recommendation right now. We haven't taken action yet. Jim, did you have a comment?
No, no, that's fine.
PJ, is that, is my understanding correct?
Yep, I was going to read the recommendation if you were done.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, is it clear to Mr. Morris what additional information you require?
The applicant has received, the staff report is sent to his residence, also sent via email per his request.
Okay.
The items are in the comment section that we'd like to have addressed.
So, so all the ones that have staff comments are the ones you need additional information on?
Yes.
Okay.
There's also some with DNR, that it's changed since the request from, was routed out and the comment was received, that's changed a little bit, so that would need to be addressed as well.
But staff's recommendation, the staff recommends continuing rezone 15-08 and comprehensive amendment 1508 until the first possible planning commission meeting. After that, can provide the planning department in writing that questions, concerns, and or requirements from environmental planner, water protection planner, county ordinance officer, and fire coordinator and others have been satisfied. That's the way the recommendation reads. And again, I believe it's in the packet that was PJ just referencing.
That's correct, I have this.
So, oh, we have some of those answers and, you know, then we'll, you'll get placed on the agenda and for discussion and questions, so...
Okay.
Any further comment or questions for us?
No.
Okay. I just read the staff's recommendation, I guess I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I would so move.
A second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Item 16.
All right, I'm waiting for the computer to bring this one up as well. Item 16, telecommunications facility permit 1501, to allow 190-foot stealth monopine pole and equipment shelter in a general commercial district. The applicant and agent of Verizon Wireless, Brian Cabot from Buell Consulting. The landowner is Joseph Thiberg. The size of the subject property is 21.94 acres. Again, the purpose is to allow 190-foot stealth monopine communication tower and equipment shelter in a general commercial district. Overall, the height would be 199 feet, that's with the nine-foot proposed lightning rod. The general description, there have been previous attempts to have communications, monopole tower and equipment shelter placed on a separate adjacent property in 2008 and 2014. Both requests were denied. In this request, the addition of 190-foot stealth monopine would fill a gap in cellular communication coverage in the area, in this area of Pennington County. The property as it exists today, again, zoned general commercial district, the lot is 21.94 acres. Access is off a 20-foot wide access and utilities right of way. There are two other stealth monopines in Pennington County. There's 104-foot stealth monopine on Big Bend Road and a 105-foot stealth monopine on Sheridan Lake Road. The telecommunications tower, the proposed location does appear to meet the setback requirements of 1.1 times the tower height from all property lines, and the staff is also in possession, has been included in the packet, of a letter from Save Industries, Amy Herbst, senior design engineer, discussing the possible failure of the tower, taking into consideration wind, icing, and buckling of the monopine. In our ordinance, there is a list of priorities of where towers can be placed, should be placed inside Pennington County, and there appears to be no higher priority properties for the telecommunications location other than this general commercial location that the applicant is proposing. The applicant appears to meet all the design requirements of this ordinance with the possible exceptions. When feasible, facility should be sighted with at least 80% of the height of the tower and accompanying structure screened from view by vegetation. Our ordinance doesn't state that it needs to be fake or live vegetation. And again, it is going to be a stealth monopine, and over 80% of that is going to be covered with fake vegetation, however, the existing trees that are there would not cover it by 80%. The applicant has chosen a location on the subject property where the monopine would be partially concealed by vegetation. The applicant has indicated that more pine trees would be planted, are planted after the monopine is constructed. This was routed through the interdepartmental review when it first came up and no items of significance came back. Just a note from our ordinance, and I'll read it verbatim, that notwithstanding, the administrator and the planning commission may approve any site location within an area in the above list... in the above list of priorities provided the administrator or planning commission finds that the proposed site is the best interest of health, safety, and welfare of the county and its residents and will not have a deleterious effect on the nature and character of the existing uses and the surrounding properties. This item was first heard before the planning commission on May 11, 2015, which is why I kind of went through the report real fast, all those pages. A motion was made that the applicant and staff get some information from U.S. Forest Service about the possibility of putting the tower on Forest Service land. Staff has contacted Rodney Brown, the lands recreation forester, and he stated, and I quote, "In general, cellular telephone network towers may be authorized on national forest lands throughout the United States." The Black Hills National Forest does not, does have direction that all proposals for cellular telephone network towers, communication sites, et cetera, will need to be on private property and not located on national forest lands. In addition, the applicant did contact another Forest Service employee and on July 8th provided a letter from Cindy Hockelberg from Nebraska National Forest and Grashlands and Black Hills National Forest, and I'm paraphrasing, in which she stated that the construction of a new communication tower on United States Forest Service property would not be authorized. Staff recommends approval of the telecommunication facility permit 15-01 with the following 10 conditions.
PJ, I guess the question I have is, really, the only difference between this and what we heard about a month ago or two months ago is that confirmation of the Forest Service that they will not entertain it being on Forest Service land.
That's correct.
I guess kind of based on that, to me, the comment on the bottom of, well, the second or third page of the report says citizen complaints and concerns at this time. No complaints on the proposed monopole yet. We had quite a few complaints before.
Yeah, and that should have been put in part of the update, and I didn't do that. This was the original report, just carried forward, and I should have included that in the update portion, and I didn't. But there were considerable numbers of complaints and concerns about the sighting of it, the view from coming out of approaches, and also if there was the possibility of placing on Forest Service.
Well, that was my concern, it just, we did, and it really, it's the same thing with the only thing changed, the Forest Service has said no.
That should have been, yeah.
So.
Yep.
Start off with questions for PJ from.
And the applicant is in the audience.
Just out of curiosity, when they say there are no other sites available, does that mean just there's no other conceivable location? Or is it that there's no other conceivable location that's being offered for sale or might be, I mean, what is?
That's a good question, I think probably best for the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
And just so I understand, you're saying that you did have the same complaints on this that you had prior?
No, we haven't heard a thing since it was continued.
Okay, so this has been continued. You've shown that this is going to be a location, this is what it's going to look like, and no one has commented.
To the best of my knowledge, our office hasn't received a thing.
Okay, there's some people in the back raising their hands.
Mr. Chairman, did you send out notices that this was coming on a second time?
Not required for continuation.
I see. So the, the public that's concerned really didn't know it was having a second hearing?
I wouldn't say they didn't know if they were here or read the minutes from the first meeting.
But if the clarification for the continuance was only for the Forest Service clarification, to me, some of those complaints still stand.
Okay.
Correct, or? Because I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't, this isn't a new action, it's a continuance to get the Forest Service clarification.
And we did.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions for staff before we go to the audience? We had a couple of people raising their hands. Are the applicant wishing to speak first? The applicant's representative here?
That's good, okay. Good morning, Brian Cabot, Buell Consulting, out of St. Paul. First, Commissioner Coleman, in regard to your question whether this, about this being the only site. We, we've got, I've got a search area to work within where, you know, within that search area, we can meet Verizon's RF objectives for this project. Outside that search area, I can't. I get, if I go three miles, approximately three, three and a half miles west, east, or south, I've got other Verizon sites already providing coverage. This is to, the purpose of this one is to, is to provide some infill in this area where we're lacking coverage right now. And I suppose it could be built on another site, but the ordinance requires, there's a hierarchy of properties. This is the only general commercial property in the feasible area for this project. There are no other higher priority sites in terms of the ordinance or even the equivalent level priority sites. If I moved it off this property, I would be putting it on a, on a parcel. That would be a lower priority site in terms of the ordinance.
So, so what you do is you find something that's appropriately zoned, that physically matches your criteria, and you go to the landowner and say, hey, we want to build a tower here? Isn't, is that the way you do it?
Yeah.
So it does, you're not looking for somebody who's commercially trying to sell a property or make it available for, you just find the ideal place or in your judgment what's acceptable, and then you approach the landowner?
Correct, and if the landowner is interested, then we, then we proceed.
Okay, and you, the zoning is obviously a critical part of this circumstan, I mean, this requirement. So there just isn't anything that meets your requirements, the combination of geographic and, you know, coverage criteria and zoning, et cetera?
That's absolutely correct.
Yeah. Okay, that I think answers my question.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Cabot before we go to the audience? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And saw some hands in the audience, so.
Good morning. My name's David Bradsky, and I have the land directly across from this site. This is the third time that we've been here to fight this. I would ask that those minutes and everything else that was considered previously in these other two requests by the same petitioner be incorporated into this meeting. We had back then drawings, diagrams, all kinds of things in opposition to this tower. I didn't even get a notice of this. The only reason I knew of this hearing was because of our neighbor. And she texted me and called me, and she said, did you know this was coming? I happen to have been out of town, and the answer was no. I had no idea. So I didn't make the last meeting. This one, fortunately, I am here. And I will tell you, in my prior conversations with Verizon, when these other two times came up, off the record conversations with him, this was not necessarily the best location, but it was the cheapest for them and the easiest for them. And it's obvious, it's flat land, utilities are all close. They don't have to worry about making a big trench back to some isolated place in the hills. I live right on top of the hill, right across from this, and I'm going to be looking at a 200-foot tall tower. If you could imagine that on a scenic highway. I built up there for the scenery, not to look at a 200-foot tall fake pine tree. Before, they didn't even want to make it a pine tree. They wanted to make it a, just a regular cellphone tower. And because it would cost too much. Don't lose sight of the fact that Verizon is a business. This gentleman that was just up here, he's going to go back to St. Paul, and he'll never have to look at it again. We have to live there, and we're going to have to look at that thing every single day. I spent a lot of money buying that property. I paid more than market for the piece that's right to the, to the east of me because I didn't want anybody building next to me. You know, and it's just one of those things, there are other locations. They could go over on Nemo Road, they can find some spots that are more isolated, that you wouldn't have to look at, and they would obtain the coverage that they need. I disagree that they need the coverage because I live there, I have nine children, we all use our cellphones, we're all with Verizon, and I have no problems with my phone. So I'm not sure what area they're trying to hit. There's probably some spots, if you're driving up the road, where you might get a drop signal. But, you know, I mean, nothing's going to be 100% perfect. And I would ask that you reject this for the third time. And if you have any questions for me, I can sure answer them, try to.
Questions for Mr. Bradsky. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'll be really quick this time. The, the only thing that I would say.
You can state your name for the record again.
Heidi Crawford. I own the property directly next to, that borders where that tower would be. Last time I talked, you know, quite passionately and not very professionally about the impact that that would have on my land values, which is the only reason that, well, there's two reasons I'm so against it. Number one is my land values. It is what we've worked really hard for, is to afford to live there. And now we're improving our house, which, you know, that money would probably be lost due to, you know, if this, if this tower went in. But as a resident of the Black Hills, I think how we develop the Black Hills is, is really important. And this tower would set a precedence for basically really redneck development, for lack of a better word, of, of the Black Hills, especially on a scenic highway. And the only, the only other tower to compare it to is the Sheridan Lake Road one, which that one's set further back from the road than this one would be. It's got substantially more natural tree coverage than this one would have. And it's half the size, half the size of this proposed tower. It would just, it would just look absolutely ridiculous. And I think we need to be careful about how we develop the Black Hills because I'm really proud, really proud of, of how beautiful it is, and I'd hate to see it be developed in a, in a way that would compromise the integrity of the beauty.
Questions for Ms. Crawford.
Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
Can you tell me what direction you live from the property? Are you south?
You can see my house. It's, my house is right next to the red line.
Okay, thank you.
It would be really embarrassing for us to live there with, with this tower right there.
Other questions? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Joe Radigan and I spoke at the last meeting, and I really just want to reiterate my concern and complaint. I have the 17 acres, my wife and I, south of Mrs. Crawford's property. And my concern is, is property valuation as well as the, the impact on the scenic entrance that people see going out 44 into the Black Hills. That's a major way that, that tourists and others access the Black Hills. And as you come up on the hill, that would be the first sight you would see is that 200-foot tower. So I just wanted to reiterate my, my concern.
Questions for Mr. Radigan? Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Eric Swanson. My property is directly to the west. One section is, it says, subject property is written right over the 10 acres that I own. I own the 10 acres to the southwest of that, and my brother owns the 25 acres directly to the west. I agree with all the other comments that the previous speakers have said, Mr. Bradsky, Mrs. Crawford, and Mr. Radigan. This tower is not designed or should be placed in this area, but my point is, this subject property, which is 25 acres, and my brother's, which is held, he and I hold it jointly, directly to the west, were zoned heavy industrial prior. This is the original old sawmill that was up there. County Commission and the Planning Zoning Board came to us seven, eight years ago and told us that this is not the area to be developed industrially. And they were forced to rezone it or asked to rezone it, and we complied. This was rezoned commercial property with the idea that this would be used for building things such as storage sheds. It was not to be used for industrial purposes, and it was rezoned for that very purpose. This property, the ham sawmill that was out Sheridan Lake Road, and there was another subject property that the county commission designed or deemed not applicable for industrial use. And putting a cellphone tower makes it an industrial use, in my opinion. You're putting heavy industrial purposes back to this property that were intentionally zoned at the county's request to remove that. Our property to the west is a planned urban development. There is strict guidelines that we could build commercial space such as office buildings if I wanted to build a mall, strip mall, which is not applicable in this area. If I wanted to build a medical office, dental office, some apartment, something like that, which is not applicable in this area, and we have no desire to do in the future and have no plans. But again, putting this type of development in this area was strictly told to us would not happen and was not designed for this area, again, approximately seven years ago, I believe is when it was.
Questions for Dr. Swanson?
I have a question. How far is Rapid City from you?
The city limits itself?
Yeah.
Were right at the edge of the three-mile limit. It depends on, if you look where it said, again, where it says subject property on this listed piece, it's about right where the blue line that where Mrs. Crawford and me end. So I have some of it that's within the three-mile limit, some of it that is not within the three-mile limit. And of course, if a slight corner touches it, they consider all the three-mile.
Right, okay.
The rough, the rough area is right down where Trout Drive is, not quite to Dark Canyons. That's about the end. I'm on the volunteer fire department that's up there across the street from Mr. Radigan's, and our subject goes, they just did an annexation down there somewhere, so I don't know exactly the line. But the north side of the highway is not in the city, the south side is in the city, and it kind of makes a jog there.
Other questions for Dr. Swanson? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Can I make a comment?
Laurie.
And just to clarify, it looks like Rapid City did not comment. Is that correct? And I guess I'd want to know if they commented on any of the previous ones.
With that, the report's in front of me, not sure if they did or did not respond to the previous request on the adjacent property. And according to this one, no comments were received from the city.
So can we determine that this is within the three miles? This, the subject property we're talking about is within the three mile? Or you wouldn't have asked Rapid City to comment, correct? Or would you?
There ought to be a reason why they were asked.
Okay.
We can check for you if you'd like.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Okay.
Staff's recommendation is for approval.
Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
Can we ask the Verizon guys to come up again?
Sure.
Or the, the consultant? I just wanted to clarify the statement that was made about, you know, you were saying that this was the best location based on your criteria and the economics associated with it. I wanted you to confirm or, or deny that statement that Mr. Bradsky said about that this is the most economical piece for you, that there are, there are possibly other places you could put a tower that may not be as economically favorable but are feasible?
I, I'm not terribly comfortable with, with that subject matter of discussing economics. It's a, it's a, essentially, it's a private contract that agreed upon at a rate that both Verizon and the landowner approve. I, I think that the economics are really sort of a moot point with regard to where we're placing it. I wanted to find a site that, that met Verizon's RF objectives and was best suited to the ordinance and, and the regulations listed there.
Okay, well, let's throw out the economics then. Okay, so you said right now that this is the best location based on your hierarchy? Okay, so this one is general commercial, correct?
Correct.
So you, this, this is the only general commercial place that's possible?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, so then what's your next criteria? After general commercial?
You don't? One, one thing I might be able to help you on, page five of the staff report. In the very bottom of the page, section 316H1A, it states the five criteria, the five hierarchies from our ordinance.
Okay, so then, so my understanding then is the next thing you move to is 40 acres or more of general ag. Is that correct?
Correct.
And because you've, you've identified this site, you haven't done an analysis then for the next criteria? Or the next? Or the next, the next type of, of lot?
The ordinance requires that, that we look at anything of higher priority. So I'm at the highest priority. I mean, certainly a general agricultural parcel might work. But given that, the goal in the ordinance is to put it on the highest priority site, that's really where we focus.
I'm just trying to understand, though, I guess if, if this site is not approved, then you're telling me there are no other general commercial sites that fit your criteria?
That is correct.
That's what I want to understand, okay.
Yes.
And then my next question is, I didn't realize, looking at the map, I live in Red Rock, which is on the other side here, where the big pine tree is off of Sheridan Lake Road. Am I going to be able to see this big pine tree too? I, I'm just curious, because I did not realize this one is twice as tall as the one on Sheridan Lake Road, which I'd rather see a pole than that stupid pine tree, I'm sorry. But, you know, that's my opinion. But, and I shouldn't say stupid, I'm sorry. I'd rather see a pole than a fake pine tree. I, I'm just curious whether now when I go outside, I'm going to see a pine tree over here and another big pine tree over here. If it's that tall, I, I don't know of the topography in between.
Sure, and I don't, I don't either.
I'm just curious.
No, it's, it's a good question, but, and I, I wish, I could say, I, not being too terribly familiar with the topography of the area, you may or may not. But, and also just a comment regarding the height, although it's been pointed out that the other towers, the other monopines in the county are, are about half the height of this one, they are also on, they happen to be on a lower priority, on lower priority parcels. They're on generals, they're on suburban residential properties.
And I realize the one on Sheridan Lake Road is on a hill, you know, so maybe that's what keeps it lower. This one is on a fairly flat piece of property, you know, with hills around it, so.
Yeah, that could definitely contribute to the height too.
And, and I apologize about the comment about stupid. I shouldn't say that.
That's okay.
Well, if, if I recall, I mean, the start of this process, probably four years ago, it basically got rejected as a monopole, and they were asked to come back with a pine tree.
And Chair is correct, it was originally presented on a different property as a pole. Planning Commission said come back as a pine tree. They did that in 2014, where it was ultimately denied, but even those suggestions were pole or flagpole.
And I guess I do remember that, and maybe I was the only person that would rather see a pole than a fake pine tree.
That's fine.
No, I don't think you are.
Mr. Chair?
Barb.
We don't have a motion, but we're, we seem to be having general discussion. That's correct.
Well, we're-
Well, these are the comments.
Yeah.
Because one of the issues brought up last time was that the only testimony we get for this poll is coming from the self-interested party Verizon, and we have no independent testimony. Now, I don't know whose responsibility that would be, whether the neighborhood needs to get an independent expert to, to find out if there is actually a need for this, because that was the question that came up. Are other servers, other than Verizon, actually serving this area? We don't know that.
I, I guess I would go to the staff, but I mean, the, basically, I mean, it's a free marketplace. I mean, even if it's being addressed by someone else, they have the opportunity to come in and compete.
Provide coverage.
Yes, they do, but they can also use the other servers, which would perhaps cost them a little bit more. They wouldn't like that, but it's possible that they can.
Well, I, I think that's a business decision that I'm not sure that, I mean, if they're following the, the guidelines, I'm not sure that we can reject it on, basically taking away their ability to compete.
I come back to the original point, though. We're getting only the testimony from the self-interested party and no objective testimony on the actual need.
Mr. Chairman?
Jim.
I, I think Barb's point is well-taken, and it was one I was about ready to ask. I think that's a good point. We don't have anyone, who's to say there needs to be a tower? Now, that I find frustrating. After all, maybe if you came to us and said, "We're going to put two towers up there", and we say, "Well, why do you need two?", and you say, "'Cause we need better coverage." I mean, there's no standard that's being employed to determine whether there's a need. Now, I, I'm not faulting Verizon for this. If the state of South Dakota or the, the State Utilities Commission decided to take that upon themselves, maybe they could impose a standard saying, "You don't need to put a cell tower every two miles. You just don't need that kind of coverage." We don't, if it was landlines, we'd have people complaining, but we've got cell phone coverage with people who drive through there, who don't live anywhere near there. It's difficult, I would think, to determine what the need is. I, I find this, the need is, in my judgment, not clearly established except by the carrier. Now, the one thing I would say, the carrier's going to pay for this. So if there was not some need, the carrier would not casually say, "Well, let's just build another cell phone tower up there because we can improve our coverage by one percent." He must, they must feel some compelling need that would provide better service. And so that's the only thing I think we have to go on. We're not going to have a third party, a disinterested public utility element simply step in and say, "There's no need" or "There is a need." I mean, I find that very frustrating, and, and so I don't know how we resolve it.
And I don't disagree with either of the, I guess my point is, our ordinance doesn't require a demonstration of need.
You're right, absolutely. Yeah, we're not, that's not our responsibility. Has the applicant met the criteria, et cetera? That's our responsibility. And, and does it impinge upon, you know, neighboring interest? I think that's what we have to be concerned with. But it is frustrating that we don't get any help here, and I go back to the same thing. These people are going to some expense, they're going to pay this fellow, I suppose, a couple thousand bucks a month to maintain, I mean, to, to allow them to have that tower there. It's, it's not a casual expense by any means. So there must be, they must feel there's something to be gained from it. But it is frustrating, because the neighbors say there's no need. And of course, their perspective is a little different than the provider, but I, I, I think we're kind of between a rock and a hard place.
Laurie, you-
Well, and Mr. Chair, I mean, I, I guess this, this tells us that Verizon has decided they need a cell tower here. They've done a study that says, "We want better coverage in this area." So I don't have any problem with that. My, my problem is, I want to understand if there are other sites that will give you the coverage you need where these people don't have to look at the fake pine tree. That's my only question, and, and you can eliminate the Forest Service, because we've been told you can't do it on Forest Service land, so that gives you a smaller subset of potential sites.
And I know, even in the 2014 process, I think the question came up, can it be done with, you know, more towers, but shorter ones? Because I think part of the concern that we're hearing from the audience and from the Planning Commission is, you know, this isn't a sequoia area, you know, you don't have a hundred-and-ninety-foot ponderosa pines.
They're not going to grow that tall.
And that's, you know, I think the concern is the appearance, and, you know, does a, does two or three shorter towers serve the same function?
Mr. Chair.
And I, and I think even, you guys came back with a hundred, I think, like a hundred-and-thirty-foot tower? I can't remember.
A sixty's, one sixty-seven, possibly.
Okay, it's taller than I remember, okay. Laurie.
And Mr. Chair, in, in my mind, I don't think that question's been answered about the other sites.
I, my concern is that when I look at where to put a tower, I, I look and I study and understand the, the ordinance to the best of my ability, because I, I don't want to waste my client's money and time. And it, it's a lengthy process to get a tower built. And I, I look at the ordinance, I say, "Okay, this will be the best solution in terms of what the ordinance stipulates, and, and if, if, if the, if the question about other properties is, 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 it's a big concern here, then it seems to me like those other properties should probably be considered on the same tier of the, of the location standards in the ordinance."
Mr. Chair?
All right.
I guess my question is, you're saying the best location, maybe you need to propose the second-best location, or the third-best location?
I don't think that's stipulated in the ordinance either, or I-
Well, I, I think what I'm saying is that if this is the best location, and, and I don't know if we'll say no, if we say no, then what are you going to do? Then you're going to have to start working on the second and the third, and-
I would, I would have to, because, yeah, we'd say the general commercial, we, we've ruled it out, it just is, it, but I really hope we don't do that. We, we've been, it's been about ten years since, since we started this. I think the first application was about ten years ago and, on Mr. Tburges' property and, and actually the general agricultural side. I'm not sure if the location standards and the ordinance were published after that date or why that property was originally pursued. I was not the consultant on the project at the time. But we, we have, I hope we've demonstrated a, a business case here in the, in the, in the time and the number of applications and the energy. And it is, it's a significant investment for Verizon to make to build any site that they, they, they certainly would rather use that capital elsewhere unless there's a real business case. So I respectfully would request an approval.
Further questions for Mr. Cabot? Mr. Bradzky, it looks like you wish to speak again?
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Cabot?
Please direct it through the chair.
Okay. I would like to know if they've actually looked anywhere else, because I don't think so. It's like you said, they've been working on this for ten years. We've gotten by without this cell tower for tho, that ten years, then. It's not necessary. We don't need it. Like I said, my phone works fine up there. The other thing is Verizon is big business. It's dollars and cents. They will spend a lot of money putting this in, but this is the most economical spot for it, because it's flat land and it's easy to trench. They lease these cell towers out to other providers, other people, other companies. They make money on these towers. Don't for one second think that they're doing this just for health and safety and whatnot. That's not the case. This is a business. Don't lose sight of that. They bring these people in. They can look other places around here that meet the criteria, that aren't going to mess with the scenic highway, that we're not going to have to look at. I mean, I pay close to thirty thousand dollars a year in property taxes on my property. And that tower goes up, you're going to see me in here. Get those reduced. Thanks.
Thank you. No one else wishes to speak, or no further? Mr. Radigan?
Thank you. I just, on the coverage and providing service to everybody, I think I mentioned last time there's one aspect of this particular map that's really important for the county, and that has to do with septic systems and residential development. The majority of this that you see covered by that new spot is on the Madison Aquifer. There's not allowable more than one septic system per ten acres. So there's not going to be much residential development up there that's beyond what is existing there. The coverage that we would be getting is for those folks driving. And I would just assume see less people driving on their cell phones and texting. So I think the residential need is really met. I don't think Verizon knows that we can only have one residence per ten acres on the Madison Aquifer. So I just want to bring that point up.
Thank you. Staff's recommendation is for approval. Anyone want to venture a motion?
I would so move that we approve this.
We have a second.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? And I would note, as I did in 2014, the firm I work for does a lot of surveying work for cell phone sites for Verizon, and I'm corporate treasurer, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to vote, so I'd be abstaining, so.
So can we have a, can we actually have a vote if we, do we have enough people?
Yeah, you have four.
But I thought you said you needed four commissioners to approve, right? We can still have a vote.
You can vote, yeah. Well, you, you'd have four. If everyone of, other than me votes for it, you still have a vote.
Okay, in other words, it, it isn't that it has to be four commission members, it has to just be four votes, is that it?
Well, Lindell's votes counts just as any planning commission member.
Oh, okay. I, I, I guess I misunderstood the reference earlier in-
I thought you said, in order for someone to approve, you needed four on the commission.
Well, but he is serving as part of the planning commission today.
That's what I didn't understand, okay.
All right.
Any further discussion?
Okay.
We have a motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Both, same sign?
Aye.
Three, do you want a roll call? Jerry, if you could do a roll call, then.
Yeah. This is for two, for the motion. Jim?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Laurie?
Opposed.
I'm abstaining.
And Barbara?
Opposed.
I was two, too.
Yeah.
So the motion fails.
Well, we had a- Part of elementary procedure, I guess, I mean, well, if it doesn't pass, it's-
Well, if it doesn't pass, it goes to automatically, it either, it goes to the next planning commission meeting.
You'd need a four no.
Yeah. Uh-uh, it goes to the next planning commission meeting.
But I know on some of, on some, sometimes we, you know, what's the thing you're supposed to do without prejudice? Would that be more appropriate? Does that give, does that give the petitioner more?
Oh.
What's the right thing?
Deny without prejudice?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's for AVs coming back, but at this point, with this failing here, you would automatically get a, a board to the board as-
The board of commissioners.
Just no, it goes to the next planning commission meeting. It does not get forwarded onto the board.
Because I thought that was why we deny it without prejudice, because then they can go to the board of commissioners.
No, deny without prejudice allows them twelve months to come back without having to pay for the application fees for the same exact request. It doesn't go to a different-
Sorry, sorry.
Okay.
But if the motion failed?
It automatically just goes to the next planning commission meeting.
But why would it come back if it's failed?
Yeah.
If it tied.
It's the way they proceeded with the procedures on the other applica, applications of the same nature.
When they were denied in the past.
Right.
Okay.
And yes, it went to the barry next, it did not go, move on to county board.
But it wasn't a motion to deny, it was a motion for approval, and so that failing, to me, it becomes dead at that point.
Got a ruling from our Roberts Rules person? Shaking her head.
She's reading.
George is back there.
She's reading through a book.
That's my understanding. I mean, it was a-
Yeah, I, I don't see why it would automatically move on to the next meeting, that doesn't-
If it was a motion for denial and it, and it didn't carry, then it would go forward.
It was a motion for approval.
But it was a motion for approval that failed, so therefore it would be just like a failed conditional use permit. I guess I-
Yeah. They did have, on the, the other applications and stuff, they did proceed it to a next planning commission meeting.
What did it go on, two to two?
Two to two, it was tied.
Two to two.
Do your bylaws say anything different?
That's what I'm looking right now.
We never tie on stuff.
Tie, it rolls to-
It rolls to the next meeting, right, exactly.
Well, quite frankly, with the, with as few people as we have, it might be constructive to have moved it on to the next meeting.
And that was by state, by Patrick Grote, state's attorney, that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Jim?
In the case of any issue, if someone from the prevailing side gives notice of intent to reconsider, then the option of calling for reconsideration at the next meeting does exist. In this case, where it's tied, there is no prevailing side. So I, I personally don't know whether giving notice of intent to reconsider would automatically move the option to the next meeting. would automatically move the option to the next meeting. And the fact that the option is, is there does not mean that anyone will move to reconsider at the next meeting. If someone does, then the issue is reexamined. Am I correct, Holly? Oh, okay, anyway. Since it is tied and there is no prevailing side, the, one from each side could say recon- notice of intent to reconsider and, and leave it open.
Mr. Chair?
Lori?
Just so I can clear, with Lindell, what you're saying is that in order for it to be here at our next meeting, somebody has to take some action, right? It requires action either on the opposing side or the, okay. Because there is no prevailing side is what you're saying? Okay.
But there actually is a prevailing side. Verizon's motion didn't.
Mr. Bradsky, if you wanna step up to the mic, so, I recognize you.
Verizon's motion didn't pass, so there is a prevailing side. The neighborhood prevailed.
Verizon doesn't have a motion.
You know what I'm saying, but I mean, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. You don't get to keep, I, I don't have, wanna have to keep coming back here every month, every month. You know, that's not fair to us. And until it passes, it's been going, they've already been here twice before.
Well, I, that's me.
You know what I mean?
The fact that it's come up before may be a moot point, but I guess I, I, my understanding is the motion was for approval, it didn't pass, it didn't matter if it passed three, one, or, or, or two, two. It didn't pass.
So it failed.
And so, so to me, it's a fail.
Right, exactly. And it doesn't automatically get moved to the next meeting to get reconsidered again, I don't understand that.
PJ, is Kinsley available to?
It's my understanding that Kinsley's in peer for this week. I'm just talking with staff, it's also my understanding that telecommunication tower permits are treated just like conditional use permits, and if there's a tie on a conditional use permit, it does go to the next planning commission meeting. If that doesn't happen, then also the applicant does have five days to appeal, which would then go to the board of commissioners.
Yeah.
So there are options.
I guess I'm not clear on why it would automatically go to the next planning commission.
You wanna state, the state's attorney's findings?
It's a tie, right?
Yeah.
It's a tie.
Cause it's a tie.
She said in the past, it's how we dealt with ties.
Yes.
In other words, this is just precedent that we're confi- complying with. This is the way it's been done before, is that right?
Under the direction of, from the state's attorneys.
These kinds of things, okay.
Yes.
We don't know why or how that came to be, but it just has happened that way.
You said that was the direction of the state's attorney?
Yeah, under Patrick's decision.
I'm not sure how to proceed at this point.
Well, if you don't do anything, if, if, I guess if you guys agree with state's attorney's rulings that we know of, if you guys don't do anything, it would just appear at the next planning commission meeting.
But my understanding to pass, you would have needed a four oh vote today. And, or a four one, or, you know, but you, you would have needed four votes to, to move forward, and it didn't get four, so, and motion was for approval, so I'm still not clear on why that would automatically move forward.
Hold on one second, I'm being called in the back here.
Dr. Swanson, I recognize you.
This is a seven commission position, correct?
Yes.
You had to have, you had to have four votes to be a pass.
Correct.
So there's two votes against it, so technically it's a five to two vote.
But we don't know.
No, no.
We don't know.
But you had to have four votes to pass this.
Right.
So it's not a tie, cause it's.
Our, our, our bylaws require a quor- a quorum of the planning commission, so, and with a commission of seven, they require us four votes to pass.
Yeah. And they didn't have four votes, they only had.
Correct.
Technically, they only had two. So it wasn't a tie.
I, I guess. Well, that's what, that's what I'm not clear on either. I guess, I mean, I'm looking for legal opinion on that, because I, I can understand, because like with two commissioners present, you know, if both of them voted for it, then it would have passed.
Mr. Chairman, can, can we just recommend that this go to the commission? Is that something we are allowed to do?
You mean to the.
Not as a conditional.
Not the commission, but to the board of commissioners, yes.
On a conditional use, we're, we're the final sayin', unless it gets appealed to the board, correct?
Right, yeah, correct. Okay.
Yep, thanks, that's what I needed.
Oh, what's wrong with, if Verizon wants to appeal it, they can appeal it.
Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Just regarding the Nave votes, I'd, I'd like to understand why, why the votes weren't in favor. I, I, I'm not sure if that's a fair question, but.
It isn't.
Okay. You don't know, if you don't ask.
We don't have to offer an explanation.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chair?
Thanks, Lori.
I can tell you why I didn't vote, if it's okay.
It's up to you, your prerogative, you know.
I'm not convinced that you don't have other sites where it's more appropriate.
Thanks.
That's my opinion. I, I, you haven't convinced me of that. I, you know, I, I'm convinced you need coverage. You know, you wouldn't be doing it if you didn't think you need coverage, but I'm not convinced that there aren't other sites that would be more appropriate and out of view of these people.
Okay.
And the public, and the public that has to see it.
Thanks, Madam Commissioner, Mr. Chair.
It sounds like from some review from staff that the appeal is the best option, that it appears to be a dead motion because the majority wasn't reached.
Yeah, just a quick search of Roberts rules, it says, because a tie vote isn't a majority, your motion require, and if your motion requires a majority vote, the motion is lost if it receives a tie vote. Therefore, a tie vote is as much as a decision as a majority vote in opposition.
That's what was my understanding.
So that would break the precedent that was set.
We.
Yep. So it sounds like the appeal would be the next step for the applicant.
The motion fails.
Now, question? If there is an appeal, will the neighbors be notified?
The ones that are here will definitely be know about it, there's nothing in our ordinance that's said to be notified. There is, it would be put up for twenty-four viewable hours with the new state law. If the planning commission, because you brought it up several times, if you wish to make a change to our ordinance, it would definitely increase fees for the applicants. You can definitely make that motion and we can consider it as an ordinance amendment. There are avenues out there for the public to, several locations and avenues for the public to see when this stuff happens.
Thank you. Anyway. Ordinance fails, so the applicant would have to appeal to county board to, for.
Within five days.
To move forward. Moving on then to item seventeen.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelsey Roush, Planning Department. The reason this item is on the agenda is I would like to get some feedback from the commission and direction, actually. We do not have anything in our zoning ordinance regarding, regarding zone, our road naming. And back in 2012, La San Zeller had tried to put a zoning, or a road naming ordinance in effect. She didn't, she didn't make it. She didn't, we had part of the story covered, and it was just road naming. We have several things, such as road signs, who installs them, who pays for them, who maintains them, and the jurisdiction of county highway regarding installing those road signs. Right now, we have a, a procedure that we follow. We have a road naming application that, that people submit. There's no fee for this application. It's just been a procedure that we've been following for who knows how long, since before I was, I started in the office. It requires the signatures of all the affected property owners, and there's no, let's see. The applicant is required to pay for and post, and have the signs posted for the road name. And the correct amount, let's see. Once the application is approved, but none of this is in an actual ordinance, so we just would like to see if, if, if you would like me to pursue writing a road naming ordinance or not. We do have a, we have ordinance number twenty, which just talks about the posting of addresses on houses and driveways and such, but that's all we have. Let's see, what else? And if we, if you would like me to pursue writing this ordinance, do we want three separate ordinances? One for road naming, one for the posting for the actual sign ordinance, and one for the posting of addresses on houses? Or should we do it all three together, which would probably be twenty pages, give or take? So, or we could do them separately, and it would be much, you know, shorter and easier to understand for the public. Just would like some direction.
Feedback from the planning commission? I, I guess, you know, we've had a lot of discussion that, on roads in general, and clarifying not only signing and naming and stuff like that. Should it be part of a bigger, bigger ordinance that basically addresses, you know, the, the maintenance, the clarification of the county's responsibility, or the lack of responsibility on, on road districts? You know, we're, we've had some cases recently where the road district members are very frustrated and feel like they have absolutely no say.
Right.
In the process, and I, I don't know.
Much bigger issue than we, than we realize.
But I mean, like, to me, it'd be almost clear to have all roads in a concise location. Whether it's signage, naming, or maintenance agreement, so.
Mr. Chair?
Lori?
I don't recall, did this just not get finished because Lu, because she changed jobs? I don't remember that we denied anything, or I remember talking about it.
There were committee meetings. I, I remember attending one.
We didn't, I'd only been here for about a year when this was going on, so I wasn't a part of it, but there were, I think, one or two committee hearings. And then it just kinda died because we were so busy in the office. So it ju- it just became a bigger issue. And we just wouldn't, weren't prepared to handle all of it, so.
So a committee was formed, discussion was conducted, and nothing happened.
Right.
I actually thought it got.
Yeah, so did I, I thought I remember, yeah. I thought I remembered seeing a propose, a proposal, but.
There was a proposal, but because she only covered road naming and not road signs or anything to do with county highway, it, it got, yeah, it did not get approved.
That's what it was.
Road signs were discussed.
We, I remember the road, I remember the road naming, yeah, okay.
It was discussed, but nothing ever came of it. And now I've been, I've had a meeting with State's Attorney's Office and County Highway, and we're just trying to figure out if we should pursue this or not.
Well, and we have different county highway superintendents at this point, too, so may have a, may have a different perspective. I wouldn't think it'd change too much, but.
And we've had several, well, we've had an issue with one property owner in, in particular that refused to post a road sign, and it was only providing access to his property, and he, it was part of a conditional use permit, and it just was a big mess. So we just would like something in ordinance to, to back us up.
The system's working except for this one person, and this is causing an ordinance to be proposed?
Partially, yes. But we, we have nothing. We have, we have this, I'll show you what we have.
Thank you.
This is for the posting of addresses.
So we require the posting of addresses, but we don't require the posting of signs?
This is our application for road naming.
This goes backwards. I guess I would suggest that maybe circulate the document that was circulated, was a couple of years ago, to refresh our memories, cause, oh, and then go from there, and, and also more of a full planning commission.
Okay, sounds good.
That would be my suggestion. Anyone else wishing to comment or have suggestions?
I, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Well, I was suggesting that recirculate that document that we had seen before, but it was a couple of years ago, and that I thought actually got passed, but.
Right, yeah.
To see what that was, cause I mean, it's not in our package, and I, I don't recall exactly what it said, so I, I would suggest putting that in the next packet and then continuing this discussion at that point.
Next meeting, okay.
Yeah, good idea, that's a very good idea. Seems to me there ought to be some spelling out of some of these details, but three ordinances, twenty pages, it seems like a lot to me, and so, anyway.
And, and right now, we don't have a fee for this, and it does take quite a few hours to actually do one road naming application. There's a site visit.
Absolutely, fees, we need fees.
I know.
You gotta pay your way.
I do research in the register of deeds office, and there's multiple emails back and forth between me and Ted Rufflett with E, with E nine one one and the applicants, just trying to just, you know, decide on a road name.
And then who typically pays for the sign? The applicant?
They're supposed to pay for the road signs.
Okay, and then the install's done by the county?
Yeah. For the most part, County Highway does install them.
And then there's nothing about maintenance, right?
Right, nothing about maintenance, nothing about, I mean, County Highway has certain specs that they, that they install these road signs to, but if the people decide to use a separate sign company, they don't have any specific specs to, to go by. So, I mean, who knows what signs have been made of and, you know.
Well, and this may come more to the forefront, too, is I know that, kind of throughout the state, I mean, they're going kinda county by county, but basically doing an extensive inventory of all signs in the county. That's, I, I think that's a federal requirement on some of the federal funding.
And in, I think in like four or five years or so, County Highway said that there was a possibility that the state is going to be paying for replacement of all signs in the county, so.
Cause they're, why? Oh.
Cause of the.
Because of the updates in the specs, in the specs and everything. We have signs in the county, I think, that are ten, twenty years old, so the specifications have been updated since then.
Yeah, those aren't gonna get changed.
I mean, it's, I, I know the sign inventory, cause we've been involved in, it's not only condition of the sign, but site distance, you know, breakaway, it's, you know, it's a fairly extensive inventory that's being done around the state. Like I said, it's, it's coming probably, whether you have a sign ordinance or not, it's probably coming to the county highway department. Anyway, do you need a motion that affect it?
Yes, please.
I would, I would offer the motion since I made the suggestion of bringing back the paperwork where we're at from two years ago for the next planning commission meeting. You know, and date would be July.
Twenty seventh.
July twenty seventh.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
County Board report?
Item eighteen, County Board report, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the June twenty second, two thousand and fifteen, planning commission meeting.
Items from the public, I don't think we have anyone, unless, George, you have anything? You're our public right now, so. Items from staff, building permit reports.
June two thousand and fifteen, building permit report, items of note, on the top there, hotels and motels, number two thirteen. It shows a seventy-one percent increase over this time last year for twenty-four permits that have come in. Those are the ones from Hart Ranch to bring their, their property into compliance with all the cabins and things that weren't permitted over the last few years. Number three twenty-eight, basically it's pole barns, sheds, and lean-tos. We took in seventy-four so far this year, it's up thirty-five percent over last year. Garages, carports, and shops, item number four thirty-eight. We took in forty-two so far this year, that's actually down sixteen percent from last year. Overall, we're up sixteen percent in the, in the number of building permits, with this year being three thirty-seven at this time, as of June and last year, at two ninety. year being three thirty-seven at this time, as of June, and last year at two ninety. Nothing further.
Any questions for PJ? Not items from membership. Anyone have anything? Are you none? Then go to item twenty-two, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.